Thank you.
Nothing on Channel 18 now?
We know that.
No good. Okay. Thanks.
No.
Thank you.
You already knew that?
We knew that. I just found out.
It's not going to happen. It won't be on tonight.
We'll be able to record, though.
Okay.
And replay it later.
All right. All right. See you later.
You don't have to do that?
Bye-bye.
Okay. Then we're good. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then you're good.
You know what? He retired. We just found him to do a job.
Yeah.
There you go.
Hey, we need some help down at the Capitol Theater.
Luke found his new calling.
Chief, the interim AV coordinator.
He's a real Zonzman.
Yeah.
Can you make your bid for him?
Yeah, you're working pretty hard back there.
There.
Let me look back a couple of minutes.
Yeah, the first chip is gone here.
There are a lot of consent issues.
Yeah. Or some seven.
I know it was the Capitol Theater.
I think you feel as to why we did that.
Saturday afternoon. Well, I not only vacuumed Saturday afternoon, I vacuumed after the dance recital. Popcorn. Popcorn. Oh, my gosh. I thought it was a great place for the dance recital, but they were sold, weren't they?
Now, you know, as they say, older adults want to move around.
I was talking to Deb Welch. She said that's the most tickets they've ever sold. So I don't know if it's, you know, because people wanted to come in there or what, but she said they sold just enough seats, but then people came in later, you know, wanting tickets that day. So they just tried to set them wherever. So I don't know. They could do two shows. They asked to do the, they could do two shows if they wanted, you know, and break them up. I know some of the other schools. Okay.
Last hour.
I gotta get arranged here. I don't want to spill my water again. I gotta figure out how to arrange my hair down there.
I'm like, whatever.
I gotta get arranged here. I don't want to spill my water again. I gotta figure out how to arrange my hair down there. It's okay. I can run that road by myself.
Welcome to the June 4th City Council Meeting Number 11 with Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the roll call. Katie is standing in tonight.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambeau.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Anderson. Here. Davidson.
Here. First order of business tonight is a proclamation, and Councilman Fleming has the proclamation for Juneteenth.
I do. Whereas the state of Texas made Juneteenth the first official African-American holiday in the United States in 1978, and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest African-American holiday observance, and whereas Juneteenth is synonymous with freedom and is observed nationally by many, and whereas the Burlington, Iowa branch of the NAACP is sponsoring the Juneteenth celebration in Burlington on Saturday, June 16th, 2012, at the De Edwin and Gladys White Memorial Park, and whereas the theme of this Juneteenth celebration is "Keep Freedom Alive," and now therefore we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, will hereby proclaim Saturday, June 16th, 2012, as Juneteenth Day in Burlington, and ask all citizens of Burlington to help celebrate this event. Signed and sealed this 4th day of June, 2012, Jim Davidson, Mayor.
We have someone from Juneteenth to come receive the proclamation. Thank you, Councilman Fleming.
Yeah, I would just like to personally say that I've been a participant of Juneteenth for years, and I usually gain about four or five millions every time I leave the council.
So come on down for food.
I'll be back down.
Sure, yes, you may. I'll be, don't let Shane in the door.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'd like to say good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Burlington branch of the NAACP and its supporters, we would like to thank the Mayor, Mr. Davidson, and the City Council for passing the proclamation honoring of Juneteenth, the oldest known celebration commemorative to the end of slavery in the United States. We will start the celebration with a unity walk for all races, faith, and ages, starting at 9:30 at 10th and Maple Street, ending at De Edwin and Gladys White Memorial Park, 400 Angler. We invite the people of Burlington, the City Council, the Mayor, all members of our community to attend this celebration and join us in a day of celebration of fun, entertainment. There also be vendors, food. And as was said, it is our theme, "Keep Freedom Alive." It's been celebrated, this has been celebrated for 147 years, and it's been 16 years celebrated here in Burlington. So I'd like once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
God bless you. The next item on the agenda is the regular consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette licenses, reports, and bonds. We have four resolutions. First is to refund a liquor license to the Blue Shop LLC doing business as a Washington. Second is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Third is a resolution declaring the area of downtown adjacent to Jefferson Street between 3rd and 7th as slum and blighted area. Fourth is a resolution authorizing a contract between the City of Burlington and Spark Consulting for consulting certain services in the preparation of historic survey nomination project in downtown Burlington. We're setting the date June 18th for a number of public hearings. One is to sell property locally known as 309 Marietta, another to sell property located at 131 South 7th, and a number of hearings on loan agreements for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, no, 5 different loan agreements. And the last one is a consideration of ordinance rezoning of property locally known as 3460 Augusta Road from M2 heavy industrial to M1 light industrial. That one will be on July 2nd. The others are on June 18th. We have two committee appointments. Mayor Pro-Tam Reed.
Yes, Your Honor. We have two appointments for Riverfront Advisory Committee, Richard Welch, and Civil Service Commission, Rachel Tabor. Would you like to say anything, or just, okay. Thank you for.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
Thank you for volunteering. We appreciate it so much.
We're always looking for more volunteers for committees.
Amen. Is anyone from the audience who wish to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mall Pleasant Street. I'd like to remove Resolution Number 3, please.
Okay. Seeing none other, counsel.
Your Honor, I would like to remove Number 4.
Okay.
If we can, resolution for contract.
All right. We have two items removed from consent agenda. Any others, counsel? Katie, you have married me to make sure we get this done, will you please? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, except for Resolution Number 3 and Resolution Number 4.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Katie?
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. We have two ordinances to deal with. Next.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisances of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Eric, is there anything different about that from last time?
No changes.
No changes. Any comments from the audience? Okay. Counsel, any comments? Questions? We entertain a motion then, Mr. Reed.
I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisance of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapters 163, Environmental Nuisance of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to amend, which effectively, the second reading moves to the third. Katie?
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. And now we'll have the vote on the motion as amended.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. Thank you, counsel. Next, another ordinance. Mr. Fleming?
Motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling Lot C in the final plot of West Avenue Business Park subdivision, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any change here, Eric?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Any questions from the audience or comments? Counsel, anything?
I guess on that note, Your Honor, I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling Lot C in final plot of West Avenue Business Park subdivision, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption for the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling Lot C in the final plot of West Avenue Business Park subdivision, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Katie?
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. Amendment is passed, and the motion now is amended.
Final. Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Now we have one resolution to consider, actually, three resolutions to consider. We'll take them one at a time here, Mr. McCambeau.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a general fund loan agreement anticipation note in principal amount not to exceed $2 million.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Farno, you want to explain this to us, please?
Okay. This is designed to help us to meet our short-term cash flow needs during the month of June in anticipation of revenues that should be received June 20th in that timeframe. We have, in terms of meeting our financial issues as they go moving forward, this was, we sort of set out a set of action steps that need to be addressed and taken care of. The first one was to meet a short-term cash flow needs of our, of our community, which the $2 million line of credit will, will do, or I guess it's revenue anticipation note. The next is to, well, we also have in line, we've already held the public hearings and approved the bonding on the sewer projects. We'll be issuing a short-term, basically a bond anticipation note based off of that prior to the end of the year to cover the sewer projects that are budgeted for this next year, and then we will complete the financing on that in the next spring as the projects are completed when we know final costs and when we're hopefully in a, our finances look a little bit more solid, and we can go to a rating agency with a, a plan of action for how we're addressing all of our fund balances. This is also in line with the, we're setting several public hearings that was, was completed here. We'll be holding those public hearings on June 18th to try to clean up several of our capital projects that have occurred. Those are broken out into essential corporate purpose and general corporate purpose. So as you look at those notices, they're in five different tranches. The $2.5 million is our essential corporate purpose, which falls under one set of rules by the Code of Iowa. The other four separate $700,000, not to exceed $700,000 issues, fall under the, a different set of rules, which are general corporate purpose, and they've been structured by our bonding attorney and how he sees, recommends us being able to move forward in a way that allows us to be able to finance the deficits in all of the capital project line items prior to the end of the year. So what we're looking at in those is a, about $5 million worth of debt that we're, that we're cleaning up. And those are going to be set up, part of that, about 1.5 million, is TIP-related debt, and that will be paid for out of the, the TIP fund. It's basically refinancing the, the debt that's, that's already in there and getting it to where it's at a positive balance, and the remainder are ones that will be set up in a way that would allow you to either tax levy of property tax for through the debt service levy, or to choose to reduce our costs in other areas and pay for them out of basically operating revenue. You'll have that decision to make as we go into this next budget cycle. But, and I know that's a long-winded approach to this $2 million issue that's on the table, but it's part of a, of a several-step process that we're going through over the next few months.
What does this bring us up to as our percent of bonding, then, to do this?
Bonding these projects, we looked at being at about 88%, which is higher than what we want to be. The typical, if you go to a bonding attorney, they'll say 60 to 80% is a good range to be in. If you're being fiscally conservative, you may say you want to be lower than that. We are very highly leveraged. We're towards the higher end, but at the others, the other part of that is, is that we're fairly aggressive on our repayment. All of our existing debt will be paid off by 2020, which, which puts us, at least long-term, puts us in a decent position. We're paying it off fairly quickly. It's just that we have a lot of debt sitting out there. So we've, past councils have done a very good job in terms of how they financed and being aggressive on getting it paid down.
Okay.
But the issue before us right now is the $2 million short-term. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mall Pleasant Street. I guess I have never been more frustrated in all my life. I ran for City Council in 2001, and I made the city's debt and the way they were spending money an issue. Right now, the City of Burlington is basically insolvent. The difference between insolvency and bankruptcy is the insolvency, you haven't been to court yet. We're still not talking about reducing discretionary spending. You get $400,000 in hotel motel tax funds that are currently used to fund the casinos' advertising department, basically. However, the money shuffled through the system. That money, by law, can be used for general fund purposes. That's a $400,000 start, and it hasn't even been on the table yet. In addition to that, we still are doing the corporate welfare. We haven't looked at any of that. We've got GE. You gave them money, they cut wages. You give Case money, they cut wages. You give Dresser-Rand money, they cut wages. Now, some of those agreements have wage-level guidelines in them. There may be clawbacks there. We're not talking about that. There's a lot of money out there. We need to stop borrowing and live within our means.
Thank you, Mr. Shayhan. Any other comments? Counsel?
I would just like to say, I agree with you on the "live within our means." I, I think we're trying to get there, but, but to live within your means, you have to pay off your debt first. You know what I'm saying? There's no getting around that, Leon, and we both know that. Regardless of how we got here, we, we still have the debt that has to be paid. You know, it's not going to, it's not going to pay itself, but you're right. You're right. We need, we do need to be more fiscally responsible, and we need to cut everywhere we can, but...
Any other comments? Counsel, anything about this $2 million that we're borrowing short-term? If I have this figured right, it's about a little less than $6,000 in interest if we carry it all the way through?
Yeah, and this is set up so we can do drawdowns on it, and that the point would be not to draw down any more than what we need to and repay it.
As quick as you can. So it'd be probably less interest in that. Yeah. Anything else, counsel? Pretty obvious, we need to do something.
Yeah.
Okay, Katie, you ready?
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we need to move over to two items that were taken off the consent agenda. We need a motion first.
Okay. Your Honor, a resolution declaring the area downtown adjacent to Jefferson Street between 3rd Street and 7th Street as slum and blighted areas.
Do we have a second? Now, Mr. Shayhan, you asked for this to be taken out. Is there a question or a comment you'd like to make about this?
Once again, Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mall Pleasant Street. What's going on? That sounds like another economic development project in the making.
This actually is a reaffirmation of something that was done in 1994 by the City Council declaring that to be a blighted and slum in order to qualify for grant funding.
Well, usually on that, that means the city has to kick money in on it, doesn't it not?
There is a, Eric, how much match is there involved?
There's not a set amount for the city. It's looking at the senior center and upgrading some of the facade in that building.
Okay, that's right. Yeah.
But there's going to be a 10 or 20% match. That's normally with the federal.
By the, by the property owners. There'll be a 30% match by the property owners.
Okay. Is the city going to be involved in, in more money here or not?
We're looking at...
Only in upgrading the facade on the senior center.
Okay.
Okay. It's a $500,000 grant from the Community Development Broccoli.
It's a facade grant for the buildings downtown, and in order to qualify for that, actually, all the property owners are going to have to give the city an easement to the front of their buildings to get this grant, and then the property owners will pay 30% of the cost to improve the front of their buildings, and then the grant will pay the 70%. The city had to show some type of match, and so the request from the, for the city was just to go ahead and, and improve the facade of the senior center, and that's the match.
But didn't we have a figure on that, too? And I don't think it was really due back.
I don't know. Eric got a number on that?
I don't think we've done anything, Your Honor, to get that cost yet.
Which is something that needs to be done anyway, so it kind of works out.
Which, some of the costs coming up on some of these other buildings, I would say that's not, I, I would say maybe $40,000, $50,000. That would be high, I think.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other discussion, counsel?
No.
Okay, Katie, please.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. The motion's carried. And we have one more, Item Number 4. In order to discuss that, we need a motion.
Let me read that, too.
Please.
Resolution authorizing contract between City of Burlington and Sparks Consulting for consulting service in preparation for historic survey nomination project in downtown Burlington.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
I asked that to be taken off because either I missed what we were talking about during our work session, but I don't remember it.
I've got a question mark on it, too.
The reason I asked for it to be taken off is because we had not discussed it in our work session, and so I would like to have Eric explain this to us.
This is a grant we received at the beginning of this year. The council approved the grant, I guess from the state through the Historic Preservation Commission for this project, a downtown survey. We have the West Jefferson Historic District, and then this is surveying everything east of that outside of the Warehouse District, and it's an intensive survey to determine if it's eligible for the National Register, which then opens up properties for historic tax credits for rehab. So that's the, the project, it does require a match. That would, I guess, come out of our budget of $2,800, and then $16,000 in grant money.
$2,800?
Yeah.
And that's, that's for the...
Local match. So this area is essentially east of 4th Street down to the river and north of Valley Street, and again, it opens up properties if they're determined eligible for the National Register for state and federal historic tax credits for rehab.
And, and if a, a building is eligible for state tax credits, they have to do improvements to the buildings of at least $5,000, that will raise the, the tax value at least $5,000, if not more, and usually those renovations are substantially more than that.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none? Thank you, Eric. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. Okay, Katie?
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye. That's the end of our regular agenda. Is there anything else to be?
I would like to make a, a motion to, a move to resend the non-union contract.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to rescind the approval of the non-union contract that we did two weeks ago. What's the question or comment that you folks want to find out about, or?
I just never, I just think we need to look into it a little bit deeper, and I, I just still don't, I'm still not comfortable with, with okaying that when I know a lot of people in the private sector that aren't getting the, the same type of, the same type of benefits. You know, this has nothing to do with me, but I've been working a job, and it took me three years to get a raise. You know what I'm saying? Well, that, that's how it is sometimes in the private sector. You know, you have to, they, they make adjustments if the company's not doing well, and I just think, as a city, we need to, we need to, we need to look in that same direction.
And I guess I, I kind of agree with that, too, and feel that we had agreed to that, and then the next thing we hear is that we're probably going to have to have a, a wage freeze. Didn't you mention that later?
There's several different options that are on the table.
Yeah, and so I guess it's like, are we giving people a raise right before a rate, a wage freeze? I, I just would like to hear a little more about that, too. And, I don't know, maybe we just need to, and maybe the people that are getting these raises are very deserving, and I don't know who's getting what exactly, but it, it's kind of hard when you're going in tough times and...
You know, and, and two weeks ago, that was sort of my, my thoughts, is when we were voting on this, and, you know, we were looking at a 3, 3.5% increase, and, you know, City Manager Farno, you know, gave some information regarding our finances and where we stand, and I also looked at it over the past three years, that thus I have disagreed with our union contract of having steady increases at 3.5 or above, but I look at it as, in tough times, we have to scale back, and, you know, I would rather not get a raise myself if, if it was me, or lose my job. You know? So I'm trying to prevent us from having to lay people off potentially because of wage increases across the board.[1783.63] That was me voting no two weeks ago.
And I just want to throw in too, to me, as far as I'm concerned, every vote that I do, well, not every vote, but a lot of the votes that I vote to, they're temporary. It doesn't mean that this is the way I feel, you know, down the road. Because if we weren't in the financial situation that we were in, this wouldn't even be an option. I wouldn't have any problem with everybody getting paid. Leon would be getting paid, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? Mike Anderson would get a raise, but I'm just saying, at this moment in time, drastic times call for drastic measures. And all we're asking is for people to understand as we try to cut back just so that we can get this budget balanced and get this under control. And I think that takes cooperation from everybody in the city.
I have a question. Legally, contract, where are we on this? I mean, this is an annual contract and...
With non-union groups, it is, right?
It's not even a contract. It's a manual that you approve.
That's right.
It has a wage scale in it, but the wage scale basically is there until you amend it.
And that wage scale, that also is a wage scale that is comparable to what other cities, our size, that sort of thing?
That wage scale was set three years ago?
Yes, this would be the third year of the salary schedule.
So it's, I mean, it's not... There haven't been a tremendous amount of changes that have occurred over time to where it would say that your wage scale is going to be out of line. You've had wage increases between then, but the wage scale was set three years ago.
And I guess the reason, too, that I wanted more discussion on is because I kind of questioned myself at that time when I voted that I didn't ask more questions. And I felt it's because I'm new and I don't understand it. So it's manual, so why do we vote? It's like, are you saying it's automatic whether we...
Typically, the union contract is a four-year contract.
Actually, ours is a five-year. We're in the fourth year of it.
We're in the fourth year of it. The non-union employees have traditionally, you have approved a salary increase or a wage increase that matches what's in the union contract on that annual basis. It reflects the changes that were written into the union. And as has been pointed out by Bev, I think that twice in the last 20 years, you have not done that.
Correct.
And you have the flexibility that you don't have to ever do it. You just create a difference between what's happening with the union sector and the non-union sector. They're not bound to do a wage increase.
I guess I always felt like that was always considered a cost of living increase. Isn't that what it... I mean, basically what it originally was meant to be. But are we really having that type of cost of living increase in these times? I don't think we are.
I don't think that's always the case either.
Looking back historically, if I could just put some historical reference to this, and Bev, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Four years ago, there was concern about the items that were going to be potentially included by the state legislature that would be required to be negotiated. And in order to get a contract in place, before that happened, we approved a five-year contract with the specific three... Two and a half to three to three and a half, I think it was stepped, over the five-year period. So that's where we are when the fourth year and at that five-year contract, it was agreed that on this fourth year, it would be three and a half percent, if I'm correct.
Right.
Am I basically saying everything right now, Bev?
Yes, it was a five-year contract, two, two and a half, three, three and a half, four.
And that's with union employees.
Part of the problem that you have there in terms of you're saying that the wages right now may not necessarily be a three and a half percent increase. If we were doing a contract right now, we would... Most of the contracts that are settled this year have been in a 2% range, anywhere from one and a half to two and a half, average right around two. So we're seeing within this contract a larger amount, but this was done four years ago, making an estimate of what the future was going to be. And the other piece that was thrown into it was part of that agreement was some concessions on insurance. And typically, when you go through a bargaining session, you... If you work with somebody who's bargaining for you and you're put in a position that if you do not come to an agreement, that you'll have to go to an arbitration for settling, you're going to win on something. You're either going to win on insurance or you're going to win on wages. So that tends to mean when you go into negotiations, you know that if you're going to push hard on one, you better not push too hard on the other because you're not going to do favorably.
But that's at the union level.
That's in dealing with unions. And then that means when you're dealing now with the non-union employees, you're also... You typically try to keep them in comparison with those same cost of living adjustments. There's no requirement. So you're perfectly fine doing however you're going to do it from year to year.
Year to year, too.
Our raises aren't based on performance evaluations or anything like that. It's just a flat across the board.
Same as... Essentially, each pay scale has the same type of a cost of living formula adjustment that the union contracts do.
That's correct. At one time, we did. In fact, I think we were before our time in our performance evaluations. But they were abolished, gosh, 10, 15 years ago. No, it'd have to be at least 15 years ago.
So basically, what we're saying then to our non-union group is if you're still employed, that means you're doing a good enough job to get a pay raise. So we don't do job evaluations tied to pay raises.
Correct. And to me, that sounds like it's a cost of living, which the cost of living is much lower than these raises that we're giving.
Bottom line is, we're... The suggestion is try to keep pace with what the union contracts were.
I understand, but I guess I question whether that we... Do we... We are in tough times right now.
But one more thing. What is it, an amount to about $30,000? Is that what you said?
And I need to correct that figure.
Okay.
I looked back on my worksheet and I was looking at a figure before factoring in the deferred increase last fall. Because last year, our increases were deferred from July to October. And that figure that I gave you of $33,590, it's not correct. I should have said it was $62,935, and I apologize for that error.
That's a big difference.
But I, just personally for the record, I'm still against the $30,000. I just think we can put that off. I think we need to try to cut back. That's just me, but I think we need to try to cut back anywhere that we possibly can. And just, that's where I stand on that.
I guess the only question I would ask about that is are we being fair to our employee groups by doing that?
May I speak to that?
Sure.
And I'll really just be repeating myself from two weeks ago, but being fair and consistent is very important. We end up with a compression problem with our higher union salaries running into some of our non-union salaries. There's kind of a delicate balance there between our union and non-union salaries. We have to look at external competitiveness. Our police chief position that we're advertising, we are $4,000 lower at our top end of our starting salary than Marshalltown was a year ago. So we need internal equity. We need external competitiveness. And fair and consistent, we need to be fair and consistent between our union and non-union employees because then that starts involving morale. And it's very demoralizing to see those of your coworkers receiving an increase and we're not. We, non-union employees, do not. And the reason I know that is we've been through it twice already and it's tough. I understand what you're saying and why you have made this motion. But I think there are some other serious considerations that you need to consider.
And I look at the other side of that. If we ask our non-union people to not take raises, then when it comes time to negotiate for a raise for the union people, I would say we said, you know, our non-union people did not get raises. And we would expect maybe that the union would not want as high a raises because we've asked people to accept less during this time.
Talk to me back. Talk to me back.
In theory, yes, I agree with you. But realistically, it doesn't work like that.
But how doesn't it work like that? That's what I understand. How doesn't it work like that? When it's so... Before you said, the first time you came, you said, "Well, it's only $35,000." Well, if it's only $35,000 between how many employees?
56.
56, which it jumped up to 62. We can renegotiate again down the road, but we could really, the city can use this money. You know, where's... To me, these people are getting money from the city for I don't know how many years. Well, where's the loyalty back to the city now that the city needs for them to give back a little bit? Why can't we... I don't see the issue. I still remain the same, so I'm not going to waste any time, but I remain the same.
I think part of the problem here, though, is I think we have to listen to our personnel people, though, when you're dealing with a couple hundred people. To me, it's an element of timing. You know, if today we were looking at the non-union wage on the annual basis and coincidentally, we're looking at the union contract looking ahead, I think we could look at both of those simultaneously and say the same thing. Things are tough. We're going to give no raise or we're going to give a very minor raise, you know? But you're talking to the whole audience. And I think that's the problem right now that Bev's talking about is if we hold the line today on the non-union people, and maybe we should, by the way, there's going to be a year then of discontent. And granted, when we get in with a union contract then going forward, that's a year from now. Granted, we can say to them then, "Hey, guess what? We didn't give any raise to the non-union people a year ago, so guess what?" Well, the timing is the issue, I think.
Bev, what other sacrifices have they made regarding their other benefits like healthcare? Are they paying any more into it? And so what would be for, say, a single individual, how much would they be paying per month?
Okay, who are you speaking to? They? All city employees or non-union?
I'm speaking non-union. I'm taking the union out of it because that's already done issue.
Right now, at the Plan C level, we do not pay towards our premium. However, those at Plan A and B do pay towards their premium.
And how much would that be?
I don't have that in front of me.
Because I think if we talk about raises, we have to talk about that, too, you know? If they're making potentially concessions on other ends, too. It's the whole picture and that's...
If I had to guess, I would say Plan B pays about $50, maybe a little more. Plan A would pay about $100 a month, a month, towards their premium. And I might add that not only two times did non-union employees not receive the increases that union employees did.
Past 20 years.
In the past, like in 1995 and 2010, I believe. Yes. They also, two years in a row, had higher deductibles, a higher deductible insurance plan than the union employees.
Did you say there's 56 non-union employees?
Yes.
So that's roughly a little over $1,000, some more, some less. I mean, that's just an average, right?
Actually, it's probably... The figure I was using is probably more like $2,000. Not quite. Not quite $2,000.
I guess I have a question here. If we vote to rescind, are you directing the personnel manager to come back with a different proposal? Is that your wish?
Yes, sir.
What's the effective date, by the way, of the non-union wage increase?
July 1st.
It is July 1st.
But that is a good question because last year, we deferred our increase from July 1st to October 1st.
Right.
Everyone did, union and non-union.
Right.
Thank you for that question.
You're welcome. I'll take all the credit I can get.
Comment, Mr. Fernando?
Well, a couple of things. One, the vote to rescind, you want it to come back with a different suggestion in it? Or you want to just move forward with the contract as is?
No, I don't want to move forward with the contract as is.
Did you want to amend as opposed to...
Yes, yes, I would like to.
Did you want to make... Would you rather have a motion to amend the previous decision? Because I think you have the option of either amending or rescinding.
Mr. McCamell, are we talking about the same thing here? When you made the motion to rescind, what... Did you mean that you wanted the non-union workers to stay on the exact same schedule they're on now?
No, no. I want an amendment. That's what I was asking for.
Okay.
And thank you, sir.
Then you would have to get the rescission motion off the table and get an amendment motion on the table. But that's depends on what the council as a whole here is trying to accomplish.
I'm for an amendment.
If you have a number in mind, yeah. Is that your wish?
That's my wish.
So you're willing to withdraw your motion to rescind?
Yes.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion's off the table, Katie? Now, if you would like to make...
A motion.
Put forth a motion to amend the non-union contract with a specific number. And that's what we'd be...
Do I have to have a specific number to make a motion to amend?
We have to amend to something.
But the best suggestion I can give, if you're looking for a figure somewhere in between, what contracts have settled this year for, the average has been just under 2%. I think it's when I was looking at it, when we were doing our contract, the average was 1.9%. It's right in that range. If you want to have that kind of as a figure for where other municipal employee groups across the state have been at.
There are, if I may, and we can do this several different ways, exactly what the city manager is mentioning, a specific percentage. We can defer an increase, so, I mean, we can defer to October, we can defer to January. And then we keep our salaries at a competitive level, both externally and internally. There is a savings to the city and we could work up those numbers. I'm sure the finance director and I could work on that.
And I do understand what she's getting at with that because that allows you to keep that separation by the end of next year.
But to defer, then we catch it up then or we just don't even...
What she's saying, they get no... If we say January 1, then the first six months, they're staying on the same pay scale they're on now. And then on January 1, they jump up their three and a half percent.
Correct, correct.
Which effectively cuts it down to a half, which would be 1.75.
But yet, next year, if at this time, then they would be looking at an increase again.
Off of a higher base.
Off of a higher basis. So I guess I'm not in particular favor of that.
Well, I mean, I like the smaller figure better at least, but me personally, I was going to completely take away the...
Say zero, then?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I want to say, zero for the duration of the year and then we would bring it back up the next year. That's what I'm proposing.
So at January 1, what would you bring it up to?
I think that depends on where our, you know, I wouldn't want to say a figure now because we don't know where we're really going to be, do we, come January 1?
Technically, folks, we have no motion on the table. We need a motion of some kind on the table here in order to continue our discussion.
So did... I'm sorry, I'm going to ask one more question to Bev. Healthcare didn't change from last year to this year, the cost?
The cost went up 5%.
5%, but for the... For the staff person, are they paying 5% more or is the city paying 5% more?
The city is paying 5% more. The staff, the union and non-union employees agreed to reduce amount of dental coverage, to not include orthodontics. And that saved us 0.9%, which got it down to the 5%. So there was a plan design change there to reduce the insurance cost.
Was that in the packet?
As far as the material I gave you, no, no.
Is that part of what the contract language changed last time, that there was a cap on the 5%?
Correct.
So that if there was a... If the health insurance went up more than 5%, that it mandated that you renegotiate what the insurance coverage was?
Yes, either plan design change or premium. Yes, either plan design change or premium contribution.
So that was what you, you basically capped the future increases 5% a year?
I want to, I want to, I want to make an amendment that we, or actually, I'm going to propose that we amend it to zero. That's what I want to do. And I need somebody to come with me. Who's coming with me? Come on back. Come on, Chris.
Well, I said it's...
Rescinding is what you're doing.
What'd you say?
Actually, no, there are some other changes that were within that document besides just wages. I don't think there are very many. There are some minor things that you had changed to. You did some positional changes.
And the other change could...
Could we table it to next week?
And if you amend it, those would go into effect, those minor things.
Well, then we need to...
I just asked the mayor if there's any way we could table it so we could have further discussion next week, get more information in our hands.
If you're doing that, just go ahead and rescind and make it a new agenda item next time.
That's what you need to do.
When we do that, that way we can move forward and then we can get all the information because I'd like to see all the information.
Point of order, where is this on the agenda?
Doesn't have to be on the agenda.
Why not?
Because...
What we did was pulled out, I don't know if you had that copy, but... We just went to the lead source. Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order allows you to revisit a decision that's made. You can, you can have a motion either later in the same meeting or at the subsequent meeting to amend or rescind, which is what's been done by Roberts Rules of Order. After that, that option is no longer on the table. When that's occurring, Roberts does not require that to be an agenda item. It was an agenda item the previous meeting. And the reason is, it doesn't have to be an agenda item, you don't know what someone may or may not make a motion to amend or rescind from the previous.
We have to rescind and then bring it back.
Yep. If you want to bring it back for future discussion, then what you're going to have to do is reinstate the motion to rescind and then put it on the agenda for next...
It'll be a new item.
Would you like to reinstate the motion to rescind?
I will second that.
Because that way we, I think, get all the information and...
Okay.
And I think that's where we all really wanted to be, yeah.
That just could have took like two minutes.
The biggest...
Hold still, Chris. The tortoise on the hare, Chris.
The biggest problem here is we have not done this and not in my experience has this ever happened before, so. Well, Katie, are you caught up with us now?
I think so.
Do you know where we're at? Don't say council chambers.
Basically...
Definitely, I'm shaking my hand, making more money.
I would be in favor of amending rather than rescinding, but I'll go along with the rest of you, so, okay. We ready, counsel?
Yes.
What do you think? Are we okay?
You're fine. You have nothing that's, this effectively, next is the last decision and for anything to occur, it has to become a new agenda item.
Okay.
So that'll be a new agenda.
And so we're going to direct our personnel director to come back with a new proposal?
I will do that.
All right. Assuming this motion passes. If you vote aye, that means you're voting to rescind our previous...
Yes.
...motion to, from two weeks ago. Okay, Katie?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
And so on our work session agenda for next week, we will have a new proposal for non-union workers on our agenda.
Yes. Sorry to make things so complicated, that's just how I roll, honey.
All right. We're good. Now's the time for comments from the audience on any item that's not already been previously discussed. Seeing none, counsel, do you have any comments?
Can I comment on what you just rescinded?
Not really because it's done. So we can come to, two weeks from now, the council meeting and comment on what's new.
Labor is my background, I have a strong background in relations and contract negotiating.
Right.
Come on back in two weeks. Come on, Bev.
Okay. Maybe you could discuss with our personnel director and...
I would agree with her that going to zero is not going to benefit you, especially with a five-year contract by a company that's here.
Okay, well, we save that discussion to him. Okay. Counsel, you have any comments?
No.
I would like to, I know we're not on the air unfortunately, but I'd like to extend our counsel condolences to former Councilman Murray and his family and his mother. It's a tough time for them.
It sure is.
Mr. Farno, do you have any closing comments?
So the reason why we're not on the air for the media is because of the lightning strike with MediaCom, so, that way you don't hammer us tomorrow, Mark. It's not our fault, for once.
We're not on TV.
We should be able to replay it, though.
Yeah. Any final comments, sir?
I'll save me.
Hold on.
Cut off jeans.
All right.
Please don't.
Any, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Katie?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Aye. God bless you and God bless Burlington. Sorry, Katie, we're not going to make it till 9 o'clock.